You're welcome. Alright, I'm gonna take it down so that I can... It's only because you're watching. Stop it! I swear I can type like a million words a minute until you...
I know, anytime you have to type when somebody's watching, it's awful.
And you drive during a presentation too, you suddenly can't see the screen or read it or click right and...
Mm-hmm.
It's like, I don't want to do this.
Okay, is everybody ready?
I think we're still missing Sterns.
Ready? Alright. Good evening, we will call the April 20th, 2020 Auburn City Council Meeting to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so for those of you that are able, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For those of you that were standing, please be seated. And Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
I am here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Jay Raj.
Here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Alright, so we will move right into announcements, proclamations, and presentations tonight. We do have a presentation, and that is on floodplain management. Presentation of the city's floodplain management program, maps, and regulation. And I believe that's going to be presented by Steve Sterza, Development Engineer Manager, Planning and Development. Steve?
Hi, can everybody hear me alright?
Yes.
Perfect. Hi, everyone. My name is Steve Sterza. I'm the Development Engineering Manager with Community Development. Trying to pull up my presentation here. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
So, the reason we're here tonight is to talk about the floodplain development code update, or the reason I'm here. But like I said, I'm Steve Sterza with Community Development. I'm the Development Engineering Manager. My group is in charge of the permitting processes tied to floodplain development code. We work with various other groups at the city. For example, the building departments, we utilize them for building review. We've got planners that we're working with as well, so if there's any critical areas or environmental aspects of a floodplain development permit application, we'll work with them to prevent to redo that. And then, our group looks over the actual permit intake, the application itself, and if there's any engineering calculations that go with that, so if there's any floodplain filling that needs to happen, we're making sure those volumes are compensated for. So, for a little background, Chris Anderson, I'm sure a few of you will recall Chris Anderson from our environmental group that used to be part of Community Development. When he took off, those responsibilities were kind of delegated to various members, which is why we're taking over them at this point, and I think we've been managing it now for about three years. The code that we were currently using is the 2010 code, so it was adopted back in 2010, which was all based off of a model ordinance that FEMA and Department of Ecology put together. That was the decision back in 2010, it's for them to use that code and take it because it has all the protection that the city needs and all of the codes that, to be honest, we're supposed to be implementing anyway.
Steve?
So, what prompted this? Yeah?
Steve, sorry, is, I don't know if you are using your Surface or a laptop or something. Is there any way for you to be closer to your microphone? You're kind of fading in and out on us a little bit, and this is important stuff. I want to make sure people, council is getting every word. Try again?
Is that better?
Yes.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Yeah, no problem. And I apologize for the tabular upstairs that's barking right now. So, why are we here? So, on February 19th of this year, we were provided a letter from FEMA, which basically states they've been working on some map updates. This actually all started back in 2007. So FEMA made some map updates to update the actual flood insurance rate maps that they use for insurance purposes and that we use for permitting purposes. So they've been going through this review process for the past 13 years. There was a number of appeals that happened. There was a lot of back and forth between jurisdictions and residents. So, fast forward to now, here we are, the maps are as good as they're gonna get. FEMA is not taking any more comment on these maps. So, we received this letter basically saying we have until August 19th of this year to adapt the maps and ensure that our code meets current floodplain requirements for our area. To not do that, we risk not being eligible for participation in the NFIP. What is the NFIP? That's the National Flood Insurance Program. It was created back in 1968. It's important to know that participation is completely voluntary, but the benefits of it are, basically you want to participate. That way, our residents and us, all of us can be eligible for flood insurance in the city of Auburn. All they ask is that the city adopts and enforces the regulations that come with it. The other benefits include flood insurance, grants and loans, disaster assistance, and federally backed mortgages. Their basic statement is they want to save lives and protect property, offer low-cost flood insurance. They want to encourage a comprehensive approach to floodplain management, so they want folks to implement this consistently throughout the, basically throughout the nation. And for the Puget Sound area specifically, we have some endangered species requirements. Because of Chinook salmon and the orcas that eat those Chinook salmon, because of the Endangered Species Act, there's some additional layers that we have to implement here in the Puget Sound area for our permitting process. So what if we do not update our code, and what if we do not reference these new maps? It's not great news if we don't unfortunately. You risk being suspended, or not risk, you will be suspended from National Flood Insurance, NFIP. There'll be no mortgages or home equity loans in the floodplain areas. There'll be no renewals of existing flood insurance policies. You'll lose most forms of disaster assistance, so if the city of Auburn does flood, FEMA does not technically have to show up if we're not participating. There'll be no federal grants or loans. There'll be a loss of subsidized insurance for pre-firm structures, so any structures that were built in the floodplain before these flood insurance rate maps are currently being subsidized. Actually, just found this out a couple weeks ago before I sent out this presentation, but unfortunately FEMA is looking at completely getting rid of the subsidized insurance for those pre-firm structures, so unfortunately this bullet point is probably not gonna be valid anymore here in a little bit. There's potential impacts to endangered species. And then, failure for communities to properly regulate will always risk either the folks that are impacted by us not regulating properly could sue the city, and there's always the risk of third parties involved in EPA rights that could also sue the city. Let's look at some of the good things. So, the benefits of the flood insurance. Flood insurance claims are paid with no disaster declaration, so the president wouldn't have to declare a disaster for folks to actually collect their insurance claims. Interestingly enough, 20 to 25% of insurance claims are actually outside of the mapped flood areas. They actually cover things like a water pipe. For example, bursts in your house, and your house becomes flooded. You are eligible to collect money for flood insurance because of that pipe bursting. Or if you have a stormwater issue that happens that's not related to a flood, you can collect flood insurance for that. Insurance cannot be canceled for repeat losses. The insurance is available to renters and owners, and the loan would be repaid with interest or for the amount that that policy was taken out. I want to talk a little bit about the various layers of the rules that go with this. So you've got the federal level, FEMA, they do the national program oversight. They are the ones that actually do the flood insurance rate mapping for the nation. They establish development and building standards, so they basically put together criteria for building construction in the floodplain that they want to be implemented throughout the nation. And they are the ones that are actually providing the insurance coverage. You've got the state level, which is the Department of Ecology. They do state program oversight. They are the ones that establish development, building standards specific to the state, so there are a few additional layers at the state that you need to implement. For example, we require, or the state requires that buildings be elevated one foot out of the floodplain. And then, as I spoke to you earlier, we've got the additional layer with the Puget Sound area and the environmental regulations. They provide technical assistance to local communities. So there's a gentleman named Dave Ridenbaugh that works for the Department of Ecology, that he is available for city staff to call up whenever they need to, to ask him questions about permitting process. He helped us out with this code update that we've been working on to ensure that it met all federal and state requirements. And he's been very helpful in just answering any general questions that we have about flood requirements. And they also evaluate and document floodplain management activities. So what does the city do? We are the ones that are required to implement all this. So we have to adopt, or I guess we don't have to, it is voluntary, but we adopt and enforce the floodplain management ordinance to make sure that it's compliant with federal and state laws. We permit or deny development activities in the regulated floodplain. We are required to actually inspect all development that's occurring in the regulated floodplain, so any homes or commercial buildings that are built. We're supposed to be inspecting those, not just to meet building code requirements, to make sure that they're meeting floodplain requirements too. If you fill in areas in the floodplain, we're supposed to be basically making sure that the plans, civil, building, mechanical, everything was built per the requirements in those approved plans. We are required to maintain all records of development in the regulated floodplain in perpetuity. We need to make any substantial damage. So if a home is damaged, and it's important to know, not just flood damage, if there is a fire or any other type of damage that happens where there's a question about what the valuation is of the damage done to that structure, the city is supposed to get involved and make those substantial damage determinations. That is because the way the code works is, once you hit a valuation of 50% of the existing valuation of the home to fix it, you now need to bring that structure up to current floodplain requirements, which can be quite an undertaking, so that's why the city, they require the cities to get involved and not just have applicants make that determination themselves. We are supposed to ensure that all permits are obtained from other government agencies when they're needed in the regulated floodplain. This is an interesting role that we have. Every other permit we issue from the city, we can't hold up issuance based off of other jurisdiction permits. So if I need to issue a grading permit and they have everything that they need for city requirements, I cannot hold back that permit. I have to legally issue that to them. With floodplain permits, we are actually required to ensure that applicants get those permits from other agencies and show us that they have them in hand before we release that floodplain permit. Or at the very least, coordinate with those other jurisdictions to make sure that we're issuing everything concurrently. We are responsible, the city is responsible for development oversight in the regulated floodplain. That is 100% our responsibility. Now, these maps, before I talk about and show you some of these updates that is gonna happen with the flood insurance rate maps, I figured it has some value to show you what some of these shaded areas mean. So I'm gonna start from the right-hand side. On the right-hand side, it says floodway, which is that shaded area with the crosshatch going through it. A good way to look at that is, that is basically kind of the channel of a river or a stream. It's areas that you can expect some significant velocities to be occurring. The regulations to build in the floodway are quite prohibitive. They're just prohibited in general for residential structures, and very complicated if you want to do any sort of commercial or just land development. You've got the shaded X zone, also called the 500-year floodplain. It's a bit confusing when they say 500-year floodplain, the perception is that every 500 years that you can expect these areas to flood. That's not what it means. It means that there is a 0.2% chance that these areas will flood every year. So, it's not really that important for most developments. They call up these 500-year floodplains because when you are proposing to build a critical facility, which includes schools, hospitals, a city hall, emergency management, or a fire station, anything like that, you need to make sure that those structures are elevated at or above that 500-year floodplain. You've got the AE zone, which is the 100-year floodplain. And again, it's not once every 100 years, it's important to know that there is a 1% chance that these areas will flood. And I got a little factoid from FEMA about a week ago in some training that I thought was interesting. So if you take that 1% chance that an area is gonna flood, you compound that over a 30-year mortgage, over the life of that 30-year mortgage, there is a 26% chance that this area is going to flood, which is why FEMA and the city wants to take a visit, or should take a vested interest in what activities happen in here and how things are constructed. You've got the base flood elevation line and value. There's contours and elevations called throughout these maps. These are the elevations that FEMA has determined you can expect a 100-year floodplain to occur in a 100-year event. So when you're doing your development, you need to ensure that those structures are elevated above that elevation. And then you've got the Zone X, that's basically everywhere else that is not subject to flooding, or at least mapped in the flood area. So these maps, I'd love to show you the maps, but the city is broken down into 30-something separate maps, so it thought it'd be easier to take some screenshots from our GIS. Currently, we're using FEMA's 1995 maps. The blue areas are all the floodplain, and then the blue areas with the crosshatch in it is the floodway areas. And the reason I'm showing you the north end of the city is, there's not really that many changes that are occurring in the rest of the city. There's no changes happening to the White River, in fact. The big impact is to the north end of the city, so I'm gonna toggle back and forth a few times just so you get an idea of what the change is. The 2020 maps that I'm going to show you, the green areas are floodplain, and the green crosshatch is the floodway. So again, back and forth a little bit. It's the north end of the valley floor of Auburn, the north end of the city that's gonna see some changes in these maps. An important thing to note is, those 1995 maps, between now and what was previously shown, it's not that they're changing the 100-year floodplain. It's just over the past 25 years, FEMA now has better, more accurate information, so they're just updating the maps to show the areas that are really actually at risk of flooding based off the best information that they have available. So, what is it that needs a permit in the floodplain? I've asked FEMA this question, and their answer is basically everything, with the exception of a small handful of things. Some of the things that are exempt outright are things like re-roofing your house, reciting your house, removing invasive plants, and replacing them with native plants. There is a small handful of those types of exemptions that are just allowed outright. But if you do any sort of earthwork or propose anything new, technically you're supposed to get a floodplain permit. Fortunately, city staff can be reasonable with some of this stuff, as long as applicants are asking the questions and city staff is documenting things properly. If someone wants to put a mailbox in the floodplain, as long as we document it properly in our permit software, that would suffice. That is the most important thing, is that we document everything. Otherwise, code does say almost everything needs a permit for working the regulated floodplain. Some of the basic requirements that the federal government puts out there related to floodplain permitting is you need permits in the special flood hazard area per firms or those flood insurance rate maps that I showed you that are issued by FEMA. Development in the floodway is not allowed for single-family residential. And as we spoke about, for a commercial development, it's quite difficult. Foundations can actually go in the floodplain. However, they do need to be constructed in a very specific manner, so you need to provide these openings in the foundations to make sure that they resist hydrostatic pressure. So you basically put these little vents in your foundation so that when the floodwaters come in, the floodwaters can go into your crawl space or lower area of your house and not press up against your foundation and potentially cause it to fail or fall down. And then when the floodwaters subside, the water can go out. So those enclosed areas below your actual inhabited home, you can use those for limited things like parking, access, and limited storage. The reason I say limited storage is, the code states that you cannot put chemicals in areas that are below the base flood elevation with exemptions for just basic cleaning products for a single-family residential home. For residential buildings, the lowest floor, including the basement, has to be elevated to or above the base flood elevation. Important to know that the state does state that you need to elevate that one foot out. And I've been told by Department of Ecology, that one foot that you elevate your structure out of the floodplain will actually save you so much money in your flood insurance rates because you get discounts the more you elevate your structure out of the floodplain, that it would more than pay for the construction costs in a very short period of time. For non-residential buildings, you need to either elevate them or flood-proof them, so they have an option where you can actually create walls that are flood-proofed, and they're strong enough to resist that pressure from waters on the outside. And the idea is when the floodwaters come in, you have these gates you can put into your door openings so your building doesn't become damaged by a flood event. You can have no increase in base flood elevation for development within the special flood hazard area. I'll try and give you a good example here. If you want to propose a development and fill in, let's say, 10,000 square feet, that's one foot deep, you need to provide compensatory storage for that, so like-for-like, so when a flood event does come in, where are those areas where that you could see volume for storage in the floodplain, that it has a place to go instead? So, use that 10,000 cubic foot example. You can't just go dig a 10,000 cubic foot hole in the city in a different location. It also needs to be a 10,000 square foot area over one foot deep. And it also needs to be in the same general area that you've developed so that when those floodwaters come in, it can actually get to that other area and easily flow over to it. Utilities must be waterproofed. This isn't so much an issue for underground utilities, so your water lines, your sewer pipes, those are already waterproof. It's more electrical lines, things that you don't typically see waterproof that are supposed to be waterproof. Utilities need to be anchored. A great example I got was like a propane tank. Those have to be anchored just in case a flood event comes in that doesn't become a floating projectile out in the river. I think that's the last thing we want to see is floating propane tanks or utilities out in the river. The most easy way to do things is to just elevate the utility. So when you start building a single-family residential home, often your furnace, your hot water heater, instead of putting that below your home, you're gonna make sure that it's elevated. Or if it's in your garage, it's gonna have to be elevated to a certain elevation to make sure it doesn't become damaged in a flood event. So what are we proposing and how did we get to where we did? So similar to what we did before, we're using the State of Washington Model Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance as our template. This has everything and anything we need to meet state and federal requirements. We took this code update and we routed it through city staff, so the city of Auburn Community Development and Public Works, to make sure that it met the needs of our residents, our permitting process, and Public Works and their capital projects. We want to try and make it easy as possible on our residents, on our city staff for implementing these regulations, and for our city staff to actually go out and have to use this on our capital projects as well. It's important to know that we've routed this model ordinance that we're gonna bring to you in the future through FEMA, and it's been reviewed by Department of Ecology a number of times. The reason I say a number of times is, we did a little back and forth with Ecology, we got comments from them. In February, we got that letter of determination from FEMA. We thought we were all good, but they made some additional updates, so we had some last-minute changes that we had to make with that as well. So I'm gonna go through some of the high points of the actual ordinance update to know between our 2010 and what we need to implement by August of 2020. We reorganized chapter 1568 to correspond to that model ordinance that the state and federal government put out. Doing the update between our existing and this model ordinance that they had, trying to compare apples to oranges, was a real pain in the neck. So, moving forward, if we have to do this again, it'd be nice to compare apples to apples and see that same layout that they've been using on a state and federal level. We've updated the definition section to make sure it meets all of the current federal, state, and city requirements. So it's been 10 years, a lot of definitions have changed, so we're just making sure that those tie with all those requirements. We've removed most of the permit application submittal criteria. So, the logic to this was, if you have an application, why not put all of the application submittal material criteria in your application and not have it in code? There was probably two pages of application submittal criteria, so we removed the majority of that. We referenced our application online, and then DOE said that we only had... We referenced our application online, and then DOE said that we only had to have, I think it was six basic criteria in the code, so that is what we're proposing to do, is just put those six basic criteria in there. There was some information already in 1870, ACC 1870, for variances that was also cited in 1568, so we'd like to remove the redundant information, so we'll cite 1870. And then there's some additional variance criteria that's required for floodplain permits, or floodplain variances, excuse me. So that is going to remain, and then Department of Ecology pointed out that there was some additional variance criteria that needed to be added to our code to meet current requirements. There is a 15-foot setback for structures proposed when they're next to a protected area, so the floodway, basically habitat areas. The logic for this was it's almost impossible to build a structure and maintain a structure when you have it pressed directly up next to a protected area, so there is a new requirement that was set by FEMA that these structures have to be setback 15 feet from the protected area. We are able to remove a date for assessing cumulative improvements to a structure. I had mentioned earlier that there is the existing structure and the valuation that goes with it, and once you hit 50% of that assessed value, when you're proposing improvements, that you're supposed to upgrade the whole structure. We were supposed to track all of those requirements throughout the life of the structure, which was, it's nearly impossible to do that. So if someone does with this update, did like a remodel 10 years ago and they want to come back and do an update today, we're not going to go back 10 years and look at those valuations and hold that against them and make them potentially upgrade their entire structure based off of what happened 10 years ago and what they're proposing to do now. Like anything, anytime you have habitat impacts, there's mitigation measures that are supposed to happen. Those mitigation measures have increased. It's important to note that those mitigation measures aren't really changing. It's just our code is going to now reflect what city staff is already doing. We are required to still meet state requirements, so we've been using this document that the state put out for mitigation updates, and we've been using that for quite some time. I had mentioned the additional variance criteria. This one's going to be a suggestion that came from Department of Ecology, which I thought was a good suggestion. There are, well, basically, it's important to know that Pierce County currently has no areas, City of Auburn in Pierce County has no areas that are mapped in the floodplain currently. However, there are some portions of unincorporated King County, specifically near Lake Taps, Bowman Lake, and Bowman Creek, that are mapped in there. Ecology suggested that if those areas were to be annexed into the city, that now we just automatically have these maps referenced. So it's not going to hurt anything, and if we end up annexing these areas, it's just one less thing for us to worry about. I've got a couple slides of images because trying to explain this without an image is nearly impossible. This is one that I'm actually pretty excited about. Currently, we are implementing what's called the riparian habitat zone, and the riparian habitat zone is just an offset from the ordinary high water level of a river or stream. So I've got an image of the Green River, which is kind of the biggest setback you can look at. So for the Green River, the riparian habitat is a 250-foot offset from that ordinary high-water mark. For our current code, if you propose anything in that riparian habitat zone, you are supposed to have a habitat impact assessment done by a professional. There's some areas that this just doesn't make sense. So FEMA and the state actually allow what's called the riparian buffer zone, which means you still do the 250 offset, but the limits of the riparian buffer zone is going to end at the edge of the protected area, which is the channel migration zone, the floodway, or the 100-year floodplain. So it's either, it's basically the farthest extent of one of these orange or green lines or the green shaded area. So let's look at, this is the Auburn Golf Course on the south side of the river. It's outside of that orange line, so it's outside of the protected area, but still within that 250. But since it's outside of the protected area, you now don't have to do a habitat impact assessment if you want to go through and do a repave job of that or modify that parking lot, or you've got those homes on the north end, also outside of that orange line. If you want to go do an addition to your home and you're one of those folks that's in that 250, you don't have to have a habitat impact assessment. So again, I'm excited about this. The city did see value to, I'm trying to think of the exact wording we had, areas that are undeveloped that have predominantly native vegetation, those could potentially have benefits to endangered species or wildlife. So in the event that you have an area that is predominantly, has predominantly native vegetation, we still want folks to do a habitat impact assessment. That is one of the things that was a City of Auburn kind of addition to the code. There is an update to the channel migration zone. So currently, for the Green River, we referenced a 1993 channel migration study that was done by King County for the Green River. It was done on a regional level, so it's pretty, we'll say, conservative. It's basically based off of historic imagery and the soil types out near the river. So what we're going to allow now is there was a small portion of the river that a channel migration zone study was done over by Fenster Park, and it has some neighborhoods that the study was done along. It's a bit more advantageous for those folks, so we allow folks to use that one since it was already done by the city in the past. There is some guidance from Department of Ecology that you can do localized studies. So if you have a specific project where you want to find out if this channel migration study could be done just along your property, we allow that now as long as you are meeting those state requirements. Here's the other update. If you don't have a channel migration study done, you are supposed to use the farthest extents of the special flood hazard area. So it would be the floodway or the special flood hazard area. It doesn't impact the Green River, but it does have some implications on the White River. It's nice to know that those impacts are pretty limited, so there is Game Farm Park that has a small stretch that it would impact. And then there is another portion that's over by the A Street Bridge where the floodplain extends beyond the floodway. Just so you're aware, you can still do a localized study if you need to for these areas, but that still exists or will exist. And then there is the floodplain map updates that are happening for the 1995, and then these maps that are going to be effective on August 19th of 2020. So another thing to note is, once August 19th, 2020 hits, insurance companies will be using these maps. So it's in everybody's best interest, including applicants, to be making sure that we're all using the best information that everybody else is using. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Counsel, does anyone have a question for Steve?
I do.
Okay, I think Deputy Mayor DeCoursey and then Councilmember Trout.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, on the flood insurance rate map, with the changes we've shown with the 2020 modifications, does or will the rate map reflect the changes that were made to the Reddington levee?
Will they reflect those changes? So there's areas along that levee that, that was one of the areas that actually got appealed, so they are not changing the maps along those portions of the river for that very reason. They're still evaluating those.
Okay, thank you.
No change to those areas specifically.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trout.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Steve, on those slides 18, I mean 16, 17, and 18, are there signs posted saying that they're flood zones, or do we just find out about that by looking at the maps?
Yeah, unfortunately, there is no signs physically on the ground, so you do need to look at the maps. City staff, so my group, and then there's a few planners. We always encourage folks, and it's known, they can contact us anytime. We can send those maps. We can do our best interpretation of where those maps and how they impact folks. And most folks that are in the floodplain and they have a mortgage, they're going to know already.
Yeah, they know. Okay. Could I ask another question?
Sure.
Mayor? Okay. Would we be able, will counsel get a copy of your slide with the maps and have them in our box? Could we request that?
Some larger maps are the...
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Sterns, I was curious about the presentation where we could lose the federal, excuse me, potential subsidized insurance for pre-firm structures. Is that legislation or is that rulemaking, and why is that happening?
To be honest, I don't know. I just found out about this in a presentation that I was part of two weeks ago, so I can look more into that and try and get that information. It's news to me as well. I'm guessing it's legislation, though.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Steve? All right, I don't see any. Thank you very much, Steve. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember.
And all of the complexities that are involved in all of these updates, so appreciate all of your work. All right, moving on. Sean, do we have any agenda modifications this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. Public comment will be of three ways only: mail, fax, or email. And then we also have Resolution 5512 that's been added to the agenda.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we have no new business this evening. We have no public hearings, so we will move to audience participation. As Sean mentioned, this is virtual participation. Public comments, excuse me, must be submitted in writing via mail, fax, or email. All written comments must be received prior to 7:00 p.m. on the day of the scheduled meeting and must be 350 words or less. Please include your name and address for the record, and please mail comments to City of Auburn. Attention, Sean Campbell. That's S-H-A-W-N-C-A-M-P-B-E-L, City Clerk, 25 West Main Street, Auburn, Washington, 98001. Please fax comments, and those also must be received by 6:30 the day of the meeting to Sean Campbell, City Clerk, fax number 253-804-3118, or, excuse me, 3116. Or you can email comments to scampbell@auburnwaa.gov. And Sean, I believe we do have one written public comment this evening. Would you like to read that into the record, please?
Yes, Mayor. This is from Bob Zimmerman, 33029, 46th Place South. His comments are, "Common sense is very uncommon. I encourage Mayor Baggis to publish the quote from Mark Train in her weekly update. Lack of common sense is a plague in Auburn that will have greater negative impact than the coronavirus. Our homeowner's insurance company advised me to notify the city as well as the owner about serious safety concerns in our neighborhood. An attorney reviewing the notification said attorneys do not have the expertise to write the notice addressing the concerns. If the city had the expertise to comprehend it, I would not have to write it." The attorney said the notification changes any loss from an act of God to an act of negligence. The notification will be an advantage to heirs and survivors. You heard that correctly. He said the notification will be an advantage to any heirs or survivors. It is obvious the insurance company intends to take action against the city to recover any losses. Washington courts supporting local government ignoring any laws or codes it chooses to ignore is very frustrating for knowledgeable and responsive citizens. Why does the Baggis administration choose to ignore state law and industry safety standards forcing citizens to send notifications to protect and benefit heirs and survivors? That is the most disgusting, pathetic public policy Mayor Baggis and this city council can possibly support. I've contacted several attorneys claiming to have secured millions of dollars compensation in personal injury and property losses. When asked about making our neighborhood safe, they say it is beyond their field of expertise. Property loss, serious injury, or fatality is necessary for a cause of action. The notice, changing any disaster from an act of God to negligence, is very appropriate. Why should God be blamed for Baggis administration's negligence of this magnitude? As a young boy in Sunday school, how a city, how a city could possibly be so wicked and evil that God would destroy is totally beyond my comprehension. It has taken 60 years. I understand now."
Thank you, Sean. All right, we have no correspondence this evening. We will go to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the city council, if any. We have the finance ad hoc committee with Chair Baggis.
Thank you, Your Honor. The finance committee consists of Councilmember Sterns and myself, and we have reviewed approximately 149 pages of claims vouchers and wire transfers in the sum of $4.7 million dated 4/20/2020. Payroll vouchers were also reviewed covering the period of April 1st through the 13th of this year at $2.3 million. Questions that we had have been answered sufficiently by the staff, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. All right, we will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Baggis.
I second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's dissent agenda consists of the minutes of the April 6, 2020 regular council meeting, the minutes of the April 13, 2020 study session, the claims vouchers and payroll vouchers as just described by Councilmember Baggis.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we have no unfinished business, so we will move to ordinances. Ordinance number 6768, an ordinance amending Section 13.24.060 relating to applications for reduced utility rates and setting forth an automatic expiration date of August 1, 2020. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Troutman.
Yes. This ordinance, number 6768, as the mayor read, is to reduce the utility rate.
Councilmember Troutman, can you make the motion first, please?
Oh, I make a motion to accept 6768. Ordinance 6768.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay Raj, would you like to second that?
I second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman, now, if you'd like to explain the ordinance.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mayor. As the mayor explained at the beginning, this ordinance is to help qualified residents to apply for reduced rates. The applicants must renew or apply...
The applicants must renew or apply annually before the end of May in order to receive the reduced rates beginning the first billing cycle in June due to the coronavirus getting, the amendment applies two things. One, extend reduced rates that residents received in 2019 through July 31, 2020. And the second is extend the 2020 renew applicant period from May until July 2020. Reduced rates will go into effect the first billing cycle of August. I recommend that we approve ordinance 6768.
Thank you. Councilmember Jayraj, did you have a question?
No, Your Honor. Did I?
There we go. Okay.
Sorry.
Any questions or comments from council? All right. All those in favor of ordinance number 6768, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Ordinance number 6773, an ordinance temporarily suspending Auburn City Code 6.01.110, requiring spaying and neutering of impounded animals that are adopted during the COVID-19 pandemic. Councilmember Malinga, did you want to make the motion?
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to pass ordinance 6773.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinga.
Yes. This ordinance was discussed at our last study session. It is where the city code requires that the Auburn Valley Humane Shelter spray and neuter all dogs and cats made available for adoption. And we're asking and requiring that the new owners pay the fee for the operation. But the purpose of this ordinance is to reduce the number of dogs and cats raised by decreasing the pet fertility. And we're asking for this ordinance to be passed.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? All those in favor of ordinance number 6773, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right. We will move to resolutions. Resolution number 5510, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement for the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network System, or PCERN. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Sterns? Yes.
I move to adopt resolution number 5510.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Baggot.
I second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement for the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network System. The project will replace and expand the aging King County Emergency Radio Communication System. This was approved by voters back in 2015. The new digital network will be used by law enforcement, firefighters, and other emergency personnel, as well as local governments. This resolution authorizes our mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Auburn, King County, as well as the cities of Bellevue, Federal Way, Issaquah, Kent, Kirkland, Mercer Island, Redmond, Redden, Seattle, and Tuculpa for the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network Operator.
Thank you. Questions or comments, council? All right. All those in favor of resolution number 5510, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution number 5511, a resolution authorizing the adoption of the 2020 King County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, including the City of Auburn Plan Annex. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Sterns?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt resolution number 5511.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Jayraj.
I second that motion, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. The City of Auburn and other jurisdictions within King County have expressed a cooperative interest in disaster mitigation planning efforts. The locally adopted plan reviewed and approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, is required under the Disaster Mitigation Act. And regular revisions and updates are required by FEMA. The plan which we reviewed at our most recent study session includes responses to earthquakes, flooding, landslides, severe weather, the eruption of Mount Rainier, cyber attacks, dam failures, and public health emergencies like the one we're going through right now. FEMA has reviewed the 2020 King County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, including the City of Auburn's Plan Annex, and approved its pending adoption by the Auburn City Council.
Thank you. Questions from council? All right. All those in favor of resolution 5511, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. And our agenda modification tonight, resolution number 5512, a resolution supporting Governor Inslee's proclamation 20-19.1, extending the temporary moratorium on residential and commercial evictions and expanding tenant protections. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution 5512.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutmanuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. You explain this. And this is our resolution supporting Governor Inslee's proclamation, as you mentioned, for the moratorium on commercial and residential evictions and expanding tenant protections during this, this time that we're experiencing.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? All those in favor of resolution number 5512, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. I would like to thank Governor Inslee for making this declaration far more comprehensive and much clearer than the original declaration was, and including the commercial evictions this time. All right. We will move to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. We will go to Councilmember Jayraj. And you are muted, Councilmember Jayraj.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I do have a report. My report for this week has to do with how our city has come together to help our senior citizens to stay at home and stay safe during the COVID-19 pandemic. With the leftover funds from King County Veteran Senior Center and Human Services Levy, Jerry Thorson and Radine Lozier were able to coordinate and put together frozen meals, canned foods, including eggs, cheese, and bread to be delivered to Auburn senior citizens. On April 10, 2020, we delivered 330 frozen meals to 110 homes at the Reserve Apartment Complex. On April 16, 2020, we delivered 1,054 frozen meals, canned foods, eggs, cheese, and bread to about 250 homes at three locations. The Reserve, Auburn Court, which is the shag, and Hillside Garden. We have two more deliveries for this month. The dates are April 23rd and 30th. And if anybody would like to volunteer, please contact Jerry Thorson or Radine Lozier at the city. I want to give a big thank you especially to Jerry Thorson and Radine Lozier for coordinating and getting this vital program on the road. I also want to give thank you, I also want to give a big thank you to all the volunteers from various city departments and the Valley Regional Firefighters Association for doing the important work of delivering food to our seniors. That's one of the reasons why I'm proud to be an Auburnite. Next, today I was at Lowe's, and one of the employees, her name was Sue, was helping me with a purchase and noticed I was wearing my councilmember polo shirt, and we struck up a conversation about our city. She was very appreciative of our mayor, for the work she's doing, and was very appreciative of the mayor's shout-out for Lowe's. As we were finishing our conversation, the manager at Lowe's approached us, and we struck up a conversation with him, and I thanked him for keeping the doors open for people like me and others. He was very appreciative of my appreciation and was also very thankful of the mayor's shout-out, even though he had not seen it. He said he was definitely going to check it out at the city's webpage. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Jayraj. Councilmember Troutmanuel?
I don't have a report, only to say that we're all still trying to get together through Zoom and continue our meetings, and those will all start up next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinga.
No report tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggot.
No report. No meetings.
All right. Councilmember Sterns?
Okay. Yeah. I attended by Zoom the Water Resource Inventory Area Number 9, New Members Orientation last week. And as I've mentioned in the past, this is something that was near and dear to Councilmember Lowe's heart. Auburn, he represented Auburn incredibly well for many years. Auburn is also a member of the Management Committee. And so after the New Members Orientation, we basically learned a lot about the Green River. We learned a lot about the fish and other things that inhabit the waters, and really about the changes that have happened to the river over the last six decades. And we're going to be meeting again in two days, which is, so anyway, it's pretty impressive who's working on it, but also, you know, the people there are working really hard through the pandemic. And I just also wanted to add, speaking of protecting fish and the habitats or environment, Wednesday is also the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. It's Earth Day 2020. You know, it's supposed to be a really big event. It's all going to be done online now. But, you know, to me, I spent some time in Washington, D.C., working around the community of natural resources. And so Earth Day and the environment is really important. I mean, if you just think about what they did in 1970, when Earth Day happened, it was that same year that it finally got Congress to pass the Clean Water Act, and since then, they've passed Clean Air Act, and Endangered Species Act, Safe Water Drinking Control Act. There's just so much that has happened since then. And I just add that, you know, we can't all gather in person. You can still, you know, go outside and enjoy nature, hug a tree. That's a thing to do this year. But there's also plenty of stuff online at earthday.org, at the Smithsonian's website, at SIEU, and Earth Day Northwest 2020. So there's a lot of stuff to do online that you can participate in Earth Day on Wednesday. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sterns, I've heard reports that the air quality has improved in so many areas because of the reduction of motor vehicles on the road. So I'm sure our earth feels good being able to take a clean breath of air as well.
It does. And you've probably all seen pictures of wild animals, you know, in cities downtown all over the world. It's just incredible what's happening. And I was talking to my daughter about this. She's very active in protecting the environment. She's doing archic studies at U-Dub right now. And she said for a long time, she thought people in my generation, you know, we just really, and we might have said some good stuff, but we couldn't do anything about it. And what she said is that people are learning now, you know, it takes a lot, but it actually can be done. You look at L.A. or other major cities across the world, like you said, you can see the city. There's no more small. And it shows that humans can actually make a change. It's pretty encouraging.
I agree. Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So if you'd called on me earlier, I'm sorry, my internet has been freezing. So I apologize for that. I just, I don't have a real report except to say that to my fellow council members, to the mayor, and to anyone else in the city, if you have any restaurants in town that you love, I encourage you to stop and get a to-go order. Because our restaurants, if we want them to be there after this is over, we have to try to support them in whatever way we can. So I just would encourage folks to shop local, try to take out meals if you can afford to do so, because our restaurants need that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. I would agree with you. Anytime we can shop local is a good thing, especially at a time like this. I want to say thank you to all of those essential personnel and all of the functions that are being performed. It is a challenge for those who are at home, and unfortunately, some who have lost jobs. And we will do the very best as a community to support everyone in this community. But yes, for those of you that can support a local business, I would encourage you to do so. And also, just a little bit about what we've been doing in the administration here, obviously everything is related to the COVID-19 crisis. Meetings every day with many different organizations. And we have been in contact with our delegation in D.C. regarding the upcoming stimulus package that we are hoping will include funding for cities. The last that we heard today through National League of Cities webinar was that it will not, that this upcoming funding package will be focused once again on small business, and that the hope is that small city, or that cities are taken care of in the next funding package. I will say that most of us as cities cannot continue to wait for the funding, that there is a significant loss of revenue. Our expenditures don't go down. We have salaries to pay, but our revenues have gone down considerably, including today, as council, you may have seen the letter I copied you on that I sent to Governor Inslee, requesting that the streamlined sales tax mitigation that he vetoed, he vetoed the extension of that, but with his veto, he also vetoed current funding mitigation that was going to cities such as Auburn, Kent, Tuculpa. And so for the City of Auburn, that will mean over the next year and a half, $1.5 to $2 million loss of revenue. That means that with this current crisis, on a best-case scenario, the city will be down roughly $6 million. On a worst-case scenario, by year end, it will be roughly $9 million. And so we continue to work with our delegation to make sure that they are aware of what the needs are for our cities. The way the original CARES Act was written, funding that would go to cities right now would not be, it would not be an eligible reimbursement. would not be, it would not be an eligible reimbursement for loss of revenue. And so we are also working with the delegation and others to make sure that they understand that any funding that comes to cities must be able to be allocated for lost revenue. And so we will continue doing that on a daily basis. I appreciate the work that you as councilmembers are doing, all of our members of Team Auburn, whether you are working remotely, whether you are an officer working every day on patrol or other assignment, whether you are public works, parks, and working out in the field. We truly appreciate the work that you are doing. Every department in our city is valued, and there is a significant amount of work that is continuing to be done. The city doesn't get to close. We continue to operate, and I just wanted to tell you how proud I am of Team Auburn. I am also proud of the City of Auburn and encourage everyone to continue with the stay home, stay healthy. That is how we are going to be able to once again be together in person, is to continue to stay home, stay healthy for a while longer until we see significant reduction and flattening of that curve. And as Governor Inslee said in a call yesterday morning, until we can ensure that we have testing that is sufficient for everyone who needs to be tested, then we cannot let up. So we will see what the governor's response is, and if he continues the stay home, stay healthy after the May 4th current deadline. So with that, I know we have no need for an executive or closed session this evening, so we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.